No, no, that does not work.
All right, we do have eight o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order. Can everyone stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I don't see any public discussion. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda in minutes?
Someone?
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Thanks. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Phil, I'll turn it over to you for update from EMS.
Um. Need to talk to you sometime today. We need to figure out when we have our advisory council meeting. Um. Thought I had all my stuff from the drilling company. Turned out we had some misinformation on the stuff we originally had, so by the time we got that all straightened out, it was middle harvest. I thought it was no first trying to have a meeting now, we wouldn't have good attendance, so I have everything we need now for for that meeting, so we can get that set up and get that done before the holiday season. Um, our new ambulance was delivered last week, week ago today. Pretty much spent last week moving stuff, drilling holes, getting everything set up with new ambulance, and yesterday we took it to Justin Tiltus, the radio's being installed and we should have it in service probably later today.
Okay, thank you.
So we did get one, moved trucks moved around, switched around, we have different truck up its ways today now, so that one will be, will be going away. Um. Been been crazy busy for the last month, for some reason, calls. Fairly more calls in the last month than I have in the last two years. So. Good to get back out in the truck again and do some of that stuff, but just been crazy. Um. I'll be in a conference next week in Des Moines. Still getting calls for assistance setting up essential service from counties around the state, which is kind of, kind of nice, but now that we're two years out, I'm kind of on the other side where what's happened after the vote, so this stuff to get to the vote is kind of
Forgot.
You gotta, gotta remind yourself.
Still trying to help them out much. I came over the phone and sending up the stuff that we did and stuff to help them out, so. CPR, we didn't complete all the CPR training at the schools, um, so that's all done, and we've done a bunch of businesses this fall, so I think as far as we're staying right now, CPR is complete, unless we have a call from another business that that we missed or something, but we're cleaning up mannequins and putting everything away if we get a phone call, so that's, that's all done. Moving veterans forward, their program's coming up, we, how we participate that with EMS, we do a, um, they auction off a, give a kid a ride to school. So we participate in that, they auction it off, um, we go in the ambulance, we pick the kid up, kids up, whatever it is. We take them to daylight donuts, we buy them a donut, we buy them breakfast, we give them a little ride around town, and then we pull up in front of school and and take them to school, so.
Oh, fun.
We're doing that again this year. It seems to be a pretty good fundraiser for them to auction that off, and the kids like it, so. We're doing that again for them. Other than that. Things are going good. Budget wise is looking good.
Yep.
Help?
No.
Still looking.
Sure.
So you have one open position or?
Yeah, I s- I have a couple applicants. I need to get some interviews set up and see, um. I want to make sure it's the right person that fits well and not just higher body, so. So we're working on that. Like I said, I do have a couple applicants. We're gonna interview and see where we can go from there. We're able to cover the schedule what folk have, just not as well as with the extra person. Especially when we have vacations or somebody calling us sick or something like that.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else?
That Spurbin we talked a little bit about, we have to put different tires on it, but.
Yeah.
That's what it is, I guess. Can't change that.
Yeah.
No.
Fortunately. Repair wise is, um, for this fiscal year, our repair cost on ambulance has gone way down from when we were with Algonquin. And I contribute most of that to the, you know, the buying of that new ambulance, and and now this one's gonna help even more, so we're not putting as many miles on the two trucks we have, which are quarter million miles, so they're staying out of the shop. But.
Knock on wood.
I saved us quite a bit of money, so yeah, knock on wood, hopefully it can stay that way.
Those are two trucks, so they're all wheel drive or they just rev?
The first one we bought two years ago was four wheel drive.
Okay.
This one's back to just the van chassis.
Okay.
So our, our kind of out, future outlook is to have one four wheel drive in place and then three that are not. So for those instances where we do need four wheel drive, we have one. We don't need four sitting in the shop.
No, no, I just, I remember for when I was driving ambulance over, you know, in Spur, you get six inches of snow, you're not moving.
Right.
Somewhere, yes, so. Keep chains with it.
All right, any other questions for Phil? Thank you, and then we got a power load system.
So this is for, excuse me. Excuse me. This is for that next ambulance that we have ordered for twenty twenty-six. Um, I was talking to the striker rep. We can preorder the cu- the power load for the next day. Have a price increase coming in effect November first. They've been doing price increases about every six months. We can lock in our order as long as we do it before October thirty-first to get the pricing locked in. They do not actually ship the power load until October of twenty twenty-five. And then we're invoiced at that time, and the bill is due thirty days after.
After we receive it?
After we receive it.
Okay.
So that would be in the next fiscal year, which is the same fiscal year we received that next ambulance, so we could budget that in the next budget and pay for it at that time, but we can lock the price in. Our warranty does not start until after we actually install it, so we're not losing anything on the warranty side either.
This ambulance has never had one of these?
Correct. So this will be the last, so right now with the six ambulance, we have five of them have a power load and one does not. So this would be the last one, and then as long as they stay in good working shape, we can move them to this truck.
Yeah.
Uh, this next ambulance, we're not gonna order a new cot for it. We're sitting pretty good on cots right now, we're, we'll be able to use the current cots we have and just put that into this truck, so. The last power load we bought was about twenty-five thousand. The, the price on this new one now is thirty thousand, that's how much they'd gone up in two years. So we get the price locked in. Saves us down the road. Um. Sorry, I was just asking, you guys probably should go ahead and get that price locked in, and I say we'll pay for it for a year.
All right, any questions for Phil on that? Otherwise I'd entertain a motion.
I would move that, uh, we allow Phil to approve the purchase of a power load system for the ambulance for twenty twenty-six. The ambulance is coming in twenty twenty-six.
Um, can you put the price in there as thirty thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars and twenty-six cents?
Yep.
Okay.
Thirty thousand, yep, two twenty-three.
Yep, I'll, I'll second that to approve purchase. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. Thank you, Phil.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Have a good day.
Yep.
You too. Dan?
I forgot, we're doing Narcan training with the Gorgast.
Oh.
The auditor's office.
Auditor's office.
Yeah.
Morning, Dan.
Good morning.
Did have one little typo on the packet I sent you. It reflected down there for the, uh, kind of the ad hoc reports with, uh, completed claims. It should say September instead of August. Uh, so a little bit of a typo. Uh, my metrics for my office there for September was looking at, uh, twenty-two phone calls, hundred and twelve messages, forty-four walk-ins, twenty-nine appointments, uh, one out of office appointment. We did two veteran transports. We had five hearing aids repaired and submitted eighty-two, uh, VA forms of various sorts for claims to be completed. Uh, number of system records that I was tracking was twelve hundred and thirty-one at this time. Uh, claims submitted to the VA, thirty-nine, ready for decision is five, sixteen under development that I'm currently working on. Uh, one in appeals and one VA healthcare enrollment. Uh, as far as training, recently just completed my, uh, fall conference in Altoona. The commissioners completed their commissioner training last Monday in Camp Dodge. Uh, I'm awaiting feedback from them. I did talk with one commissioner from West Bend yesterday. He said it was very positive. He also said that the training was better than last time. And it was more of an executive type, uh, scenario for them because Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs sponsored to put the training on, so the VSOs were not invited or involved in that aspect of it. Uh, I'm going to request that my commissioners, if they haven't done so, maybe put together kind of a little after action review. Hopefully I can get that to you in my next monthly update for October and then just kind of give you some more details on that. Um, don't have any, uh, outreach currently scheduled, uh, for the month of October. We had the mobile medically in here on the eighth. Um, part of the issue with that, they had to leave early because the refrigeration process that they use for specimens in labs broke down. So they had to leave a little early and get to Fort Dodge so they could get it to the phlebotomist down there. Uh, completed claims, monthly awards for the month of September, not August. We had eight, eight thirty-eight, twenty-eight with no retroactive payments. Uh, year-to-date monthly awards, twenty-six thousand, nine forty-two, ninety-two, and retro benefits of a hundred and twenty-five thousand, one hundred and four dollars. The rest of it is pretty much standard, has stayed somewhat the same. Uh, the survivor pensions and the veteran pensions will fluctuate a little bit as veterans unfortunately pass away and award their spouses. Uh, I did provide just a brief handout so you could take a look at, uh, some of the commissioner training that took place and the subject matter there, as well as our agenda for our fall class. Uh, just a couple of notes. The, uh, last time that I visited with you, we talked about the VA shortfall, uh, of three billion dollars. Congress did fund that. Uh, they went back to say that that was due to veterans accessing benefits and healthcare services under the PAC Act, so there was an influx there that they didn't quite anticipate was gonna be quite so heavy. They had four hundred and thirteen thousand veterans enroll in VA healthcare during that period, and VA cites a twenty-seven percent increase as a result. Uh, VA is gonna start resuming collecting pharmacy copayments again, so I'm racing for that storm because those were all paused over COVID, and the vets who normally would have routinely paid whatever it was they paid per month, they're now gonna have to start paying again, so I anticipate phone calls, questions, and some people being maybe a little bit upset about that. Uh, Veterans Day on the Hill will be in January, uh, next year, the twenty-second, from nine to one o'clock, and I will be in attendance for that, or I plan to be. And then lastly, we did receive some guidance by the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs on the additional three K monies that, uh, were allocated, uh, by the governor. That is all gonna be managed and run through the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs. So one of the things that I have to do is get with Tammy next week or later on and discuss how we can get that line item added to my budget and what that process is, because I run everything for that particular three K through them. And then what happens is, they write a check back to the county. And I did the same thing. I, I was like, well, how's this gonna work? It is, and.
So it's, it's a reimbursement then, that way?
It is. Uh, the question that I have, that I don't think I got clearly answered. So, uh, for one thing, they have to stay within the budget here and in terms of calendar, from what I understand. Uh, I'll double check that to be sure. But reimbursement doesn't, reimbursement doesn't happen until it's completed. The issue that we have is my national conference is in July of next year. This year, I don't have a national conference, but I have three K for training in addition to the ten K that they've allocated, which I did receive. So I'm working on a lot of computer-based type training that will give me some of my CDUs and and maintain some of the skill sets so I can execute some of those monies. Um, the idea being, obviously, we don't wanna have to write a check back. But the way that IDVA explained it to us at the conference with respect to this particular three thousand dollars, we have to use it within that timeframe of what they've allocated it for, we will, there's a, there's a website where they created a reimbursement form, basically drop down manuals, and we just pop everything in. We submit that in our receipts to IDVA. They in turn then write a check back to the county. The question I had, if I had personal expenses, now they're reimbursing all of that back to the county, and then what's, what's the expectation if I'm looking to get reimbursed for meals? And I, I submitted it all through them. IDVA is not gonna write me a personal check, so I'm gonna come back to the county.
You have to.
And now you're telling me, and and I don't know this, but it's kind of inverted, okay, so I gotta sort out the meals piece with what, as an example, with our auditor, that just doesn't seem to make sense, so. The eight oh one, uh, document, uh, that talks about, uh, the Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs, which I can send you a copy of what I've received thus far, and I will do that today. Um, it goes into more detail on that, and I haven't simply had time to read all of that. There was a lot of, uh, consternation when this was brought up. Uh, part of it stems from reimbursement on meals or personal charges, whereas IDVA is gonna reimburse at the federal DSA rate for meals, miles, et cetera. In the county, we have a difference in that with respect to the employee handbook in terms of meals, so there's, there's that whole thing. Um, and and there's some other issues there as well. I'm told that the office is gonna provide a memorandum to the each, each county better explaining some of this stuff, that's how it's supposed to be followed through on, so I'm, I'm waiting to see that. That's a do-out that they said they would provide us. And I wish they had more details. Unfortunately, I do not. Subject to your questions, that's really all I got. I hate to drop the bomb and leave, but that's kind of how, that's kind of how they get it with us down there, but as far as the training, the training went well, at least from a VSO standpoint. Um, I gotta get some slide packs yet. They put them out on a Google Drive, which I'm not, I'm not familiar with, so I've gotta try and find the links for that, but the thing that's also a challenge is they said, well, this money's been available to you since one July, so I'm thinking instead of calendar year, it's probably that this year we are testing. Um, that being said, I'll try and get that executed, but you know, it's, I, I, if I had this money for three months, I hadn't been told how and the manner, the manner in which to execute and spend it until October. Uh, so I'm not anticipating, based upon the monies that I currently have allocated for school, which is where I've been funneling all of my education expenses right now. I'll have to see, uh, how they want this, because that can only be spent for training. Uh, the other stuff, you know, I can use for, for handouts or and trinkets and and other things like that, so I'm still trying to sort through some of that. I think it would have been easier if they just would have went from ten to thirteen and be done with it and and and, you know, let the directors sort through that, but this, the way it was written, was specifically allocated for national training because of the fact, not this county, but other sister counties were saying, well, the VSO goes to the state conference in spring and the fall. You get your CDUs in the spring. Why do you need to go to nationals if you can do it right here in Iowa? Okay. Well, we don't get CDUs in the spring anymore. We have to get our CDUs at national or another service organization might deluge you whenever they hold their national school, wherever that may be, Indianapolis, I think, most, most common, but. That's it, guys. That's all I got. That's the down and dirty for my job. I'm still waiting through thirty phone calls that I gotta return yet, so. Being out of the week, uh, being out of weeks sets me back about a week and a half, so it's just such a, but. Any questions on anything?
Goodbye.
Yeah.
Yeah, I will, I will send you that eight oh one, and and like I said, I haven't had the chance to read through it. And, uh, hopefully I can make some sense of it when you guys get it. If you see something that you have questions with, please let me know. I'll run it up the fly pole and try and get some clarification, because it's all, it's all for review and a vote right now. It's like it's in its first reading or something like that, so. So.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Um, next up is quarterly reports here. Um. They're all in our packet. I guess anything you wanna say about them to Tammy, or?
Nope. Nothing other than, no one.
Okay. Anyone have any questions as they read through them?
Just what normal quarterly reports.
Yep. All right, if there's no questions or comments or anything, I would entertain a motion to approve the quarterly reports for auditor, recorder, sheriff, and veteran affairs.
Sure.
Okay, do we have a second? Thanks. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimously. Karen, I think we are ready for you, for your, um, update here regarding Iowa Land Records annual report and recording fee modernization.
Yes. Did you, so on September twenty-third, um, our president of our Iowa County Record Association sent out a letter to supervisors, as well as our ESS chair, we used a account from Waukato County, um, and then I emailed you guys this packet of information. So basically, I just wanted to touch base with you, um, and let you know the benefits of raising our recording fees. Um, as you read in the packet, it hasn't been done since nineteen eighty-five. Um, pages now are five dollars, and they'll go up to ten dollars a page, and, uh, it'll eliminate confusion on different fees. It'll symbolize recording fees for, um, for our bankers and lawyers and things like that, and also it's not just an increase in funds, but as you saw in the packet, it'll benefit, uh, a lot of inter the, the inter workings of Iowa Land Records. There's data integrity, um, the Back the Blue system they're going to work on, they are also going to try to install some property fraud modules within Iowa Land Records. So all of these things that they're working on takes, takes time and more staff to implement these things. Um, and it's also, it'll bring money to the general fund, which is a good thing. We need to increase our fees, and that will increase our recording fees will help the general fund. Um, but the projects that are going along with the fee increase are all going to be positive for our users and the public. Um, I think they'll see a lot of different changes within with the, the increase, and I just wanted to, to tell you guys, if you hear from your affiliate or you're at meetings and you have questions about this, you know, come to me, I'll, I'll sit down and visit with you as far as spelling it out or explaining to them, or if you hear a negative, you know, aspect about it, raising fees is never something that comes out good to the public, but this has not been done since nineteen eighty-five, so. And we are the lowest in, not the nation, but the surrounding states, as you saw on your handout, Iowa's very, very low, and the increase that is proposed doesn't even really put us up that close to other states as far as just, you know, catching up with inflation, so. It's not just a raising of fees, it's a lot more going into our Iowa Land Records module to, um, improve it, and that's what the modernization part of it is. So I just want to touch base with you and let you know that if you wanna visit with me, fine, and if you have questions with the public, direct them to me, and if you have any questions now, I'm open to discussion.
Is there a timeframe on when this is expected to go into place, or when you're requesting fees to go up?
They're, they're, they're working on legislation right now, and with that legislation, um, they're, they're going to have to fine tune some things, so. You know, word is July first, but you know how legislation can go. It has to be passed, it has to be approved. So we're hoping July first of twenty-five to get this in place, so it'll be a significant, well, you saw the fifty-six to seventy-nine percent increase, uh, you know, in revenue for recording fees, which would go to the general fund, so those are all good things. And also improving the module so that we can add more things to it, especially property fraud. That's, that's a big one they're working on right now, you know, it's, it's a thing. So we wanna have something in place for Iowans to protect their real estate, so it's all, it's all a ball of wax. I just wanted to talk to you guys, and I haven't done it yet, and get on the agenda, and if you have any questions, come on over to me. That's fine, about it.
Sounds good.
So, okay.
Karen, yep.
Very good, yeah.
Any questions from anyone else?
For me? No, no, you know where I am.
Thanks.
All right, yep.
All right, um, Roger, you ready for vehicle?
Morning.
How's everyone today? Good.
Good, how are you?
I didn't get this to you because I just got it yesterday, finalized, because, uh, I'll explain to you here in a second what's going on with our vehicles.
They're not computerized?
No, and they, they went up to fifty-one, uh, after this, this is the last bid on these. Now they're going up to another couple thousand. Oh, okay, so this is a vehicle that we, we replaced one vehicle last year out of our budget, and we've already got one this year, you approved one a couple months ago. And this will be our second one for this fiscal budget. Um, the reason I had to kind of put it on hold, you said what we're gonna do, is I don't know if you heard or not, but on the morning of the sixteenth of this month, about a week and a half ago, one of our deputies was traveling home at five o'clock in the morning and met a large implement tractor pulling one of those liquid manure wagons. I'm not sure what the official term for him is, but you know how they have the applicators on the back with the disc on it? Well, the owner of that vehi- or the driver of that vehicle forgot to raise the disc, and our deputy met him, um, about five o'clock in the morning, and I thought perhaps totaled out one of our patrol cars, but I just heard back from insurance that's a little over twenty thousand dollars damaged. They're gonna fix it. The good news is, is that we're not liable for it. The owner of the implement is responsible, their insurance is responsible, fixer patrol car. So we now got a patrol car setting that's out of service. I originally thought if it was gonna be totaled, then we would put this one into our rotation and just get the equipment switched over, but now the insurance company said, no, we're not gonna total it, it's gonna be repaired. Uh, what I'm gonna do with this vehicle is replace our two thousand sixteen Grand Caravan. Now you'll see about halfway down the page, the trading value on it. Um, that's our current, um, vehicle that we use for transports for our jail. Um, it's the oldest one in our fleet, so it's, uh, time that we gotta get that into rotation at some point, replace it. And, uh, this vehicle that we'll set up, uh, will no longer, um, we won't have to set it up as a patrol vehicle, it'll be set up as a transport vehicle. So the only equipment that we'll need to put in it is transfer the current radio system we have in the caravan. That'll get transferred to this Tahoe, and then we'll set up a secured cage and rear seat for transporting events. Uh, but it won't have the cam- or the, uh, lights and sirens and systems that a normal patrol car would have. So that's what we're looking at. Um, it's, it's in, we can go pick it up. It probably will be, um, the past patrol vehicle that you approved a couple months ago, we're looking at probably after the first of the year before it gets put in place. That's just how far behind they are on getting equipment ordered, and, um, guy told me the other day, he said, I feel like we're back at the COVID times, because we're eight weeks out on a lot of the stuff that they're ordering, so that one has not been put into place yet, it's still waiting for the equipment to get, um, the last four that we purchased. This one should go on the road pretty quick, because all we gotta do is transfer the radio system and put a secured cage in it. So. That's the price on it, I think it was forty-nine, nine, and then the four thousand dollar trading value brought it down to forty-five, nine oh five.
All right, is there any questions for Roger? If not, I would entertain a motion. All right, is there a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
Thank you.
Thanks, Roger.
Um, annex lease, and then. All right, um, we, next we have lease for early childhood for the annex. Has everyone seen that in the packet?
Um, Todd recommends that this one goes until June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six. So it, it will start November first, and then instead of ending June of this next year, it'll June the following year. I did check with early childhood and they are fine with that. And this is their regular lease.
Yeah, cuz that's blank in here.
Yeah, so he, he recommended we just fill that in at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
And this is the same as?
Same as prior, yep.
Yeah. And do you wanna specify the ending date of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six? Okay, is there a second to that motion?
I'll second.
All right, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. All right, um, next we have, actually, Josh, you wanna call Doug? Next thing we have is member planning and zoning and board of adjustment. I think in our packet here, it's Scott Wade Eisenbarth is interested.
Hey Doug, it's Josh up here in Florida. Uh, we are up to you.
Josh, did you say you had someone in mind or anyone else come up with any other names, any other interest parties?
No, I mean, I get calls that, that Wade Eisenbarth likes to reappoint.
Okay, yep. Okay. I thought, I thought you had said you had someone.
Yeah, yeah, I would think he's interested in.
Okay, um, yeah, I, the person I checked with wasn't real interested, so, um, any objections to Wade? Okay, well, then I would entertain a motion to appoint Wade for both.
Motion to appoint Wade Eisenbarth to the, uh,
planning and zoning and board of adjustment. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. And then, do you have contact info for him or do you need that?
Yeah, I do not have contact.
Okay, I, I don't know if I do, otherwise Carter talked to him, right?
I, I think so.
Okay, um.
And, um, Doug might have his contact. We can ask him when he comes out.
Did either of you guys talk to Wade directly or?
I just.
Okay, okay. If either of you had a number.
Good morning, Doug.
Morning. Thank you. All right, Doug, do you have Wade Eisenbarth's contact info for, um, member of planning and zoning or board of adjustment? Did he contact you or reach out and ask any questions?
I have not.
Okay.
Any contact with Wade Eisenbarth?
Thank you. They did just approve him for both.
Pardon me?
They did just approve him for both P and Z and board of adjustment.
Yep.
Okay.
Um, I think Carter had talked to him, um, so he should have contact info too, so we can get that to both of you. Um, I think we are ready for construction in the right way. Doug?
So Wade has been appointed to both the planning and zoning and the board of adjustment?
Yep.
And no one has his contact information?
I believe Carter does.
I just sent a message to, and Doran Mary, CPK, sent, give to him.
Okay, if I could, yeah, so.
I may have to, may check. Nope, I do have it. There you go.
Well, you have it.
Yep. Thanks, Jamie.
Okay. If you, if anyone would have his email address or mailing address.
I would, I don't have either of those. I would just call him and ask for him. I'm sure he can tell you.
If you guys wanna call him and ask him, ask for it, that's, uh, board's.
Okay.
You know, I, I don't know. I can certainly talk to Wade, but, uh, the board is who appointed him. Uh, I don't know whose responsibility it is to invite the zoning administrator with contact information.
I'll send him a text right now.
I mean, he could certainly call me. I do have, uh, board of adjustment meetings.
We'll, we'll get it to you, don't worry.
Well, I do have board of adjustment meetings, uh, plan and a zoning, uh, commission.
I'll get it to you. Do you have anything for right away?
I do. It's in the board's pocket, uh, packet of information. There's a request for tile crossing. This would be uh, Tom Hellman between section fifteen and fourteen of one hundred seventy Avenue. Per our crossing policy, all paperwork and the application's been, uh, completed, and I would recommend that the board would approve of this.
Right, is there a motion to approve the request? Motion by Jarksen, I'll second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous.
He seconded that?
I did.
All right.
All right, thank you.
We're also, uh, having a retirement recognition next Tuesday. I don't know if it's been on the agenda yet, but, uh, if you could sign those two documents there, um.
Excited.
One.
Thank you.
Second, huh, nice to fill. And I can forward you the text too, if you wanna, I'll forward it to Doug. All right, are you ready for discussion?
Sure. Uh, construction that's going on right now, there is a bridge being, uh, bridge that being formed down by Dana Harnorfer's and George Gunter's. And we believe that with good weather next week, there's a possibility that that bridge would be poured. Uh, we continue to work on the two FEMA, uh, events that, uh, happened. Uh, we're mowing working roads, working on roads. Uh, we have open positions, uh, at the mechanic shop, uh, Bancroft shop. We had, uh, employee retire. We've had other employees express interest in transferring to Bancroft shop. And we have been talking with those employees. Uh, yesterday, we did have a Sway City employee, uh, that, um, resigned. So we will be looking for, we'll go through the process, I guess, asking if anyone, uh, interested in transferring and then, uh, getting, uh, that employee replaced in then Leverne. We have an employee that it appears he has abandoned his employment. And we will be going through the process to get another employee at Leverne shop. Uh, planning and zoning, we do have a meeting October twenty-eighth, the zoning commission, uh, to review and make sure that the urban renewal plan, uh, is, uh, according to the zoning ordinance and the comprehensive plan that's at five o'clock. Uh, last week, we received, uh, three variance applications and one special use permit application. Uh, so the board of adjustment, we do have, uh, activity for the board of adjustment. And, uh, a lot of information's already been sent out to the commission. I will, uh, get things to Wade a- as soon as possible. So he can be part of that, uh, discussion.
And I did send you his contact information already.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, health insurance, uh, I forwarded an email that we received. Donna and I have been talking. Uh, Wellmark, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield is offering, uh, a hundred dollars per contract per month credit for a prescription drug program. Uh, right now, we do receive credit, uh, from, for the prescription drugs. And there's a second page to the letter that, uh, shows what Cassoue County has been adjusted to, uh, for twenty twenty-four. Uh, you can see that, uh, we've had two quarters that have actually been over one hundred dollars, uh, per employee, per month of, uh, of a rebate, uh, we total, our total through two years, twenty-two and twenty-three, we actually had eighty-six dollars, uh, for an average. So, uh, we would be getting more money back, uh, using this hundred dollars per contract per month, um, if we chose to do that. In addition, uh, they would start this January one of twenty twenty-five. Uh, so we would receive one hundred dollars per contract per month, as well as the third and fourth, uh, quarter agreements that are part of our agreement right now for our, our practice. So we would more or less receive twice as much. I visited a little bit with Donna. Uh, we believe this would be a benefit to our self-insurance fund. And I don't know who is supposed to make that, uh, approval, uh, the way our self-insurance fund is, it operates. But I believe this is a, a benefit, and I, I believe Cassoue County Self Insurance, we should take advantage of it. So unless the board has different direction, um, I'd like to at least have some sort of a, a positive response from the board right now for this. We'd be foolish not to
Oh.
take advantage of it.
I guess, I didn't read something that was sent here right before the meeting, so, um, just looking at this in two seconds, this is a hundred dollar fixed rate, they're saying?
Fixed rate per month per employee. So we would re, be receiving twelve thousand five hundred dollars per month credit, hundred fifty thousand dollars per year credit. Well, we've had over a hundred, over twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three, um, the adjusted twenty twenty-four formulary is eighty-six dollars. So it is greater than what we have received, uh, over those two years.
But would these not be expected to continue going up with the cost of
This is just for one year.
healthcare prescriptions?
This is for
Okay, so this is only for one, one year period?
the next point. And if we, if we feel that it's not working for us, we can opt out the following year. This is a one-year, one-year decision, um, and it's, again, it would s, begin January one of twenty twenty-five. Uh, we would receive the set one hundred dollar per contract per month credit. And we would also receive what our agreement is with our current, uh, health benefits.
So only if they don't change the insurance plan?
Uh, I don't, I did not ask that question.
Well, to actually vote on this, we would probably need to have it on the agenda, but, um, I don't know.
I guess you could either.
I can certainly put it on the agenda if you would like.
The administrator have enough authority to make that decision.
That should be something the board should vote on?
I'll put it on the agenda for next week then.
Yeah, and that'll give us some time to review it and think about it too.
It does say November fifteenth, when they would like to, uh, um, get this taken care of, so that gives us time.
Yep, that's good. Thanks for the introduction.
Uh, that's all that I have.
All right, anything from the board for Doug? All right, if not, thank you.
You bet.
I sent Marjorie a message, but they're probably busy, so I'll.
Yep, that'll be fine.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just giving her ballots, and if she's done with that, she'll be in.
No, that's fine.
Do you wanna sign these papers?
Yep. Today's date. October twenty-second.
Yep, more in March, we are ready for a repair request. Roger, if you wanna read off yours?
Yeah, I have a repair request for section eleven in Los Gracias Township. Uh, it'd be number one fourteen, it's Drains District number eighty-three. It's on the main tile. And it says a crop that's harvested, it's a large tile, thirty-two, thirty-four inch. That's the only one I got.
Okay, I got number one fifteen and Heeren twenty-eight for James Hoffbauer. Um, bulkhead has slid down and plugged outlet tiles, it's blocking, uh. Sizable, um, tile, maybe a couple of them, so. Needs repaired, and that's all I have.
Supervisors take care of the requests?
Alright, is there a second?
Uh, second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion carried unanimous. Thank you. Anything, anything else for Drainage?
Do you have any else?
I have two requests to make out.
Okay.
Yeah, I got a couple to write out too.
Okay.
Perfect, that'll work, thank you.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, discussion with our other.
Okay, well, I think you got a copy of this certified mail too, from the city of Algonah. Um, letting you know that there's gonna be a public hearing regarding a consideration of an application for, uh, contingent at annexation. On November fourth at five o'clock in the city council chambers. Um, it's annexation of property owned by Dixie Eichelberger into the city of Algonah. I have the rest of the information here, I can pass that on if you wanna look at it. And that came on the sixteen. Um, and then I got an email from Donna and Doug that they have finished. Working on the weed commissioner sanitary and planning and zoning job descriptions. Um, so they need direction where to go from here, um, on hiring a, a new person.
Okay, um. Probably put it on the agenda for next week to approve those joint, or those job descriptions. And post the position, I would think, any other thoughts from the board? Jackie, not in agreement? Okay. Roger, Josh, any other thoughts? Um. The one thing with planning and zoning, we did not set a salary for that yet. Um, so, we would probably need to set a salary for that aspect prior to posting, I would think.
And put that on the agenda too.
Yep. Anything else for that that we haven't, that I'm missing? Yeah, 'cause job descriptions, salaries for the other two positions that already be set, so. Reset planning and zoning and then. Just publishing the job and posting all that, I think we should be good.
Okay.
Perfect.
And then, um. Uh, our expense summary by department, I just wanted to let you know that, uh, animal bounties is over. By eight hundred dollars. I mean, there's plenty in that, in the supervisors, but just wanted to let you know, we are over on that. And then, um, the Wex, um, pipeline, or, I'm sorry, the pipeline, um. Were over by eight hundred twenty-nine dollars and thirty cents. Yes, so we've only budgeted five thousand for that, so we are over that as well. So wanted to let you know. There's plenty in the fund, but I wanted to let you know where we're at with that right now.
Yep, that's good, 'cause I think Carter had asked about the pipeline stuff, so.
Yep, and that was as of this, just this last month, so.
Perfect.
Um, and then, we're busy with absentee voting. Um, of course, with the election, we have over sixteen hundred ballots requested so far, um, by mail and in person, so we've been really busy. We have training coming up, um, Thursday and Saturday, um, lots going on there, then getting ready for the election on November fifth. The urban renewal, um, was sent out to the schools, I know Doug did get a call from Algonah Schools yesterday with some questions. Um, so I think he was able to, to answer those. The notification will be sent to the papers on Friday for publication next week. So I think we're up to date with that. Um, and I know some of the cities have been putting that on their agendas, um. Their, for their council meetings, so, um. I think we're doing good with that, um, like.
We can talk about that when we get.
Um, and like Phil said, um, he's doing some knock, you can get here, that's fine. Knock and training, uh, for office tomorrow afternoon, um, after hours, um. And then, just doing everything we can to be ready for November fifth. We've had a lot of voters, we're staying very busy, so it's going pretty well so far, so.
Yeah, and just quick while you're, um, finishing up here, kudos to you and your office for the public test. Last week, that was informational for me as a board member. Um, everyone else, I think, was in, would be in agreement with that, so.
Well, thank you.
If there's.
Thank you for attending, it meant a lot that you took the time to be there to stay informed of how we keep our elections secure, so. Thank you for that.
Yep.
We just need to be made aware, we have very safe and secure elections.
Yep.
No question about it. Whatsoever.
Yeah, we.
And that's, I mean, that's the, one of the things we talked about, um, have, we've talked about many times in regards to the elections is. They are governed by the states, so if there's stuff on the national media. X, Y, Z place doesn't mean there's issues here at home, so.
And we're always happy to answer any questions anybody has about election security or elections in general, that's what we're here for, so. Um, we, we encourage the questions and we're happy that you guys could be there to see what we do to make sure that it's. Stays safe and, and accurate.
Yep. Alright, anything else?
That's everything.
Perfect, um, Jack? Roger?
No, do you have anything to ask me?
Um, do you wanna talk about the annexation stuff now, or maybe we can as a group whenever?
I just figured what's the annexation for?
Um. I don't remember who even mentioned it first, but I believe someone said they are looking at developing solar. On our side of the mechanic shop up to the corner where BMW's shop is and everything. For the city of Alpona, I believe it, believe it'd be some. Commercial entity that would do it and then like AMU would buy the power back from them or something of that nature. Um, but some of the annexation order, maybe all of it is for the. Moratorium to avoid that, that we have in place, which.
I was just gonna say it's kinda defeating the purpose of your. Moratorium, but.
I guess to some degree I could see that, but on the other aspect, I mean. I don't, I don't think any of us, I mean, I personally wasn't, but I don't know that we ever really talked about stopping cities from doing anything. So I don't think we were ever intending to limit cities or, or locals that are here doing things. Plus, this isn't, the moratorium is not rules, it is a pause so that we can set rules. And I think there is some confusion about that out in the public, um, but. Moratorium is not. Stopping solar as a blanket, it's a temporary period to set rules. And, I guess, yeah, this is process they're able to go through, the public hearing. Um, as Jamie read off, it's no, scheduled for November fourth at five P M. At the Albona City Council Chambers, so. If anyone has any questions or concerns or anything about that, um. They can obviously contact city council in Algonah or show up to that meeting, that's us. They're informing us, obviously, but this is not our proceedings to handle, so.
If anybody wants a copy of that, I'd be happy to make it copy, so.
Yep. Yeah, and there's a couple here, I mean, I can leave mine here too, so it doesn't matter, but. Um, anything else you had, Roger? Okay, Josh?
Uh, I was not able to make the hazmat meeting, uh, scheduling conflict, but today I have. Uh, KCEDC, uh, or, um. Uh, emergency management six, and then E nine one one, following that, so. Got a few of those out here.
Okay. Um, I have C A G D C this Friday, um, and I don't think I had anything this last week, so, yeah. So it's this, and I've got another one here, I did. I've gotten this, I think, a couple of times now, there's this company that says we're celebrating our hundred seventy-fifth anniversary. And they would like to do a book on our, our milestone, so. I don't know that we need to worry about that, but. If anyone's interested in that, then you can read that letter, um. Otherwise, anything else? Come for the good of the county here. If not, I would entertain a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye, any opposed, say nay, motion carries unanimous, I know too.